I'd like to call to order the Tuesday, September 2nd, 2008 meeting of, joint meeting of the Glendale City Council and the Glendale Redevelopment Agency. May we have a roll call for council, please?
Council members Najarian, Quintero.
Here.
Weaver.
Here.
Yusefian.
Here.
Mayor Drayman.
Here.
And roll call for the agency.
Agency members Drayman.
Here.
Quintero.
Here.
Weaver.
Here.
Yusefian.
Here.
Chairman Najarian.
Here.
Okay, thank you very much. Could we hear the report, please?
The agenda for the September 2nd, 2008 joint public meeting of the Glendale City Council and the Glendale Redevelopment Agency was posted on Thursday, August 28th, 2008, on the bulletin board outside City Hall.
Okay, thank you. And could we also hear the items at one?
At item one, Director of Development Services regarding Adult Recreation Center, A R C project. At one A is a council resolution adopting a net benefit finding for use of agency funds for the A R C Public Improvement Project. One B, an agency resolution adopting a net benefit finding for use of agency funds for the A R C Public Improvement Project. One C is an agency resolution appropriating $2 million to provide funds for the A R C Public Improvement Project.
Okay, thank you very much. Let me go to the city manager, who I guess is going to go to Phil Lanza fame, who is now standing at the podium. Mr. Lanza fame.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council and the redevelopment agency. Last month, the city council and the redevelopment agency approved the use of agency funding to fund a gap in the Adult Recreation Center project at the city's Central Park. The agency is authorized by section 33445 of the Health and Safety Code, the Community Redevelopment Law, to fund these types of improvements. It's also included and anticipated in our redevelopment plan. In order to do that, the city council and redevelopment agency needs to make three findings. First, that the improvements are of benefit to the project area, that they help eliminate blight, and that there are no other means to fund these improvements. The project is just adjacent to the central redevelopment project area and would be of benefit. And as we have seen in our last round of budgets, there was actually cuts to all departments. In addition, the development of the downtown has not come about as we'd thought, therefore there aren't the park impact fees that are being generated. So we think that there, that this third finding, that there's no other way to pay for these, can be made. You have resolutions in front of you making those findings. Because we did not anticipate this at the time we adopted the budget, there is a resolution of appropriation. Last item is staff would like to know your direction. We have suggested that if you want to do this, that it be a, an advance on the set aside of agency funding from housing projects and commercial projects. It is not, that is not included in the resolution. If you would like for us to do that, you'll either add it to the resolution or just give us direction. If you prefer not, we have funds set aside for discretionary use by the agency and city for any project you choose, and it wouldn't need to be an advance against those future contributions. Staff from Parks is here, city attorney's office, and Development Services if you have any questions.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Lanza fame. Let me ask my colleagues whether they have any comments or input before we go to the speakers. Mr. Najarian.
Thank you. I have a comment and a question. In response to your question, Mr. Lanza fame, I would, it would be my preference that we do not use the advancement of the impact fee funds for the A R C. If we've got some discretionary funds in one or more accounts, it would be my preference that we use those funds for the purpose of preserving those impact, park impact fees for other projects that, that I'm an advocate for. The second question is, I guess to Mr. Chapchan, or to you, Mr. Lanza fame. In the recent environment, construction environment, it's my understanding that many bids have been coming in at much, significantly lower figures than engineer estimates were made as of recently, a few months ago. And would we be benefiting from this falling construction price market where 2 million or so over our estimated construction cost? Is it likely that we will benefit from a lower actual construction cost in today's market? Either George.
Drayman, members of the agency. I believe we will, Councilman Najarian. I think we're anticipating anywhere between 14 to 20 percent below what our estimates were. We're hoping that that comes in like that.
Well, the 12.5 might come in at 11.6 or 11.7 or something like that.
I think Public Works has seen bids that come in lower than that. We're anticipating lower bids.
That's good. It's a nice change from experience. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Councilman.
I have a question from our city manager. As we've been getting reports from the state budget saga, they're talking about taking about 1.2 million dollars away from the redevelopment agency. If we take this money out of there and the state decides we're going to take 1.2 million dollars, would there be enough money in that account to pay the state?
Well, it's probably on, on a current year basis. The question's a better one for Phil, and he's shaking his head yes. My greater concern is the implications of the loss of the tax increment to our bonding capacity. The roughly, now the number from the state could be closer to 1.5 million dollars depending on how they apply it before or after your various transfers. And if it's done on the basis, they did the last takeaway redevelopment agencies, it will likely be closer to a million and a half dollars a year. That translates to about 17 or 18 million dollars in bonding capacity. And you recall in our capital improvement program, we had two different redevelopment agency bond issues anticipated. This could wipe out half of one of those, which is going to have a huge impact on our resources available for that 10-year capital improvement program. As yet, we haven't gone back to the C I P to see what's going to happen with all those projects we had listed, but it'll, it could have a 17 or 18 million dollar impact on that general C I P.
But we're still hoping that the state hasn't done anything. They keep fighting.
No, but I have to tell you though, everything we're hearing, nobody disagrees about the taking of redevelopment money. We have no heroes or champions in Sacramento. The governor has proposed it, the senate, the senate democrats attempted to pass a budget that not only took the 5 percent of redevelopment agency, general T I, but also took a large chunk of any low moderate income housing money that has not been encumbered or committed from housing agencies. That's another big piece. And frankly, my fear is that'll become the new base. So as of yet, even from our own legislators, and I contacted Senator Scott as recently as Friday, and pointing out to him the loss of our capital improvement funds and the impact on our budget, our general capital budget for things like parks and everything else in our C I P. His response was, "I understand your problems, but I want a state budget." That told me, "Don't expect that we're going to have any champions in Sacramento." And that's the word coming back, is there, there doesn't seem to be anybody on either side of the aisle or the governor's office. Of course, taking redevelopment money was part of the governor's budget proposal. It's also now been part of the senate democrats' proposal, and the only thing the republicans have objected to has been any tax increase. So I think, so the view, the view among redevelopment professionals is, we're dead meat.
What happens, what happens next June when they can't do it again?
Well, that's why the governor's proposal talks about it as being a three-year borrowing, or not a borrowing, a takeaway of three years, a limited three years. Our view is, it'll never be restored. And from a bonding standpoint, underwriting agencies will never let you include it anyway because now it's so susceptible to being taken. There's a question whether it'll have an impact on our bonding capacity for the rest of our T I, because they're going to, the underwriters will continue to look at it as the state's ongoing unstable budget situation. And if they haven't taken it away from you this year, they might very well take it away from you next year. And even though they can't, they can't infringe upon established bonds, they can put you in a technical default position with your bonds by getting into what is your, what's the 125 percent called?
The coverage.
Yeah, the coverage test you have on your bonds. You're required to have as a minimum 125 percent tax increment to meet whatever your debt service is. Well, they could, they could cut into that to where you actually have technical default on bonds, even, even though they can't put you in actual default. So this whole effort by the state to balance their budget by taking tax increment money could put the whole redevelopment bond market completely upside down. We might not be able to sell bonds periodically, period, period in this upcoming market because of the state's lack of stability. That's a really long, long, roundabout way of getting to the point that, that this very unstable situation doesn't bode well for redevelopment agencies, and I think our larger bond issues are seriously at risk in our C I P. But will that impair us moving forward with this allocation? No.
Now and in the future, redevelopment is going away.
I think so too.
Okay, well, on that happy note.
Jeez, I shouldn't have even asked that.
Wowee, like an undertaker's convention in here all of a sudden.
A lot of people are listening.
Okay. Any other happy news before we go to the public? No? Okay. Our first speaker is Herbert Milano, followed by Nancy Kent.
Mayor Drayman, members of the city council and city staff, my name is Herbert Milano. I guess if I were to be a bearer of more bad news with regard to capital improvement, potential impacts on the city of Glendale, the, there was a judgment made where the issue for which this city had a contingency, which was the transfer of D W, funds from the utility to the general fund in the city of L.A., the city of L.A. lost. And so that calls into question the potential, or actually losing even more funds in capital improvement, transfers to the general fund. So you're going to have other additional issues that you probably have to contend with. My issue has to do primarily with the objectives of the redevelopment agencies' funds to improve redevelopment agency areas. So that if you were to strictly go by the intended concepts, you would build along the redevelopment area, which would be the, alongside Bryant Boulevard rather than the park itself. And the reason why I continue on this vein is because I'm really hoping that the city council would reconsider the, the style of, of the building and the taking up of the additional open space for Central Park, because it is our last opportunity for us to preserve open space and maximize it for a very, very long period of time. Now, I talked to many of you, four of you individually, one by one, to get an assessment of how you feel about the preservation of the open space. Four councilmen have told me individually that they did, that they support the idea that we have to maximize the last major open space in, in this area of Glendale. I want to remind you, we lost the space that we had, where it's now the Whole Foods Market. We lost the parking, all of the parkland that was going to be aligned for where the fashion center is today. We lost the Millennium Park. Altogether, we lost, I would imagine, about eight acres of parkland that was going to be attributed and assigned to this area. And we continue to build significantly in this area. I think that it is only justified for us to seriously, for this council to truly reconsider that the last major open space of Glendale needs to be preserved, because the opportunities, who knows, five years from now or some other time, for us to have a truly urban park that is deserving of a city that is growing the way we're growing, that it has a truly magnificent urban place for the community. Taking it up right now and taking it up with parking spaces is a significant detriment to the future of Glendale. And I, it is my hope that this, if this gives you an opportunity for you to reconsider it, I hope you take it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Milano. Nancy Kent, followed by Anita Preisler.
Nancy Kent, resident of Glendale. The previous time that this was on the agenda, the staff report said something like there would be an attempt to have this be a lead building. And I did not hear anything about that mentioned during the meeting. And I'm, I was wondering, is there a serious effort to do that, or was that just wishful thinking in the staff report? Next point, I have very little hope of your granting my request to save the four tennis courts at Harvard and Louise from demolition. However, there were reservations expressed by several council members, as you nevertheless all voted yes on the current plan the last time this was on the agenda. Councilman Weaver reminded us of his unsupported proposal to have tennis courts on top of the new building. And there were reservations by others about exactly which land on that block this was to be built on. The folks who use the existing buildings want them replaced as soon as possible. Yes, replace the buildings and do not diminish the size of the proposed new building, but please do not demolish the four functioning tennis courts there. Move the planned building westward to use the, and use the adjacent parking lots for drop-offs instead of having a drive-through lane where the tennis courts are. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kent. Anita Preisler. Ms. Preisler, last time you were here, you indicated that we were all kind of frightening. I hope now that you're, on your third visit up to the podium, we're becoming less frightening, hopefully, and not more so.
Very true. Thank you.
Mr. Kungler.
Mayor, councilman, I really want to thank you for your generous vote on renewing our facility at the A R C. That was on August 12th. And to reiterate, 10 years ago, I started exercising at the A R C, and at that time, I saw drawings and plans and renovations for the new center, and it didn't happen. I wish to address three items to be, may or may not be holding up our funds. I understand there's a question about the drive-through drop-offs. I want you to know, this is not designed to be used by the members of the aerobics class, but the increasing number of people using walkers and wheelchairs, most of these people are dropped off by the dial-a-ride company. And they, these are people who come in for lunch, as opposed to having meals on wheels sent to their house, which would add cost to it. I read in the newspaper, the Glendale News Press, on August 28th, that there's a private company leasing the tennis courts. And this has sort of become some kind of an issue about being moved to the Fremont Park tennis complex. Seems like it would be good for them. Actually, this is, I don't want this to become a seniors versus tennis players issue. I'm just bringing it up. And my third point, while we are in the process of being reconstructed, I wish to remind the council that, don't forget about some kind of temporary parking for the seniors so that they have access to the, to the, I was going to say playground, we're not that young anymore. Okay. Please, let's just get going on our existing plans. 12 years is long enough for people to wait, people who don't have that many years, myself included. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you very much. Before we go any further, can we get a clarification on the leads question and, just for starters?
Dave Ahern, you going to field that one?
Mr. Ahern.
Mayor Drayman, Dave Ahern, Cap Projects Administrator for the Parks Section. The leads issue is, is one that we come too late in the game for the design on this project. So we're going to be exploring the opportunities to obtain certification for it. That's not a, an issue that has no cost attached to it. You have to get your certification through someone who's a consultant that has the, the certification to provide that certification. So it's a, it's an additional cost well over $100,000. So we're waiting to see where our bids do come back, and then look at design changes that we can, can make to get just the, not a silver certification, but the initial lead certification, the first level of certification. Redesigning this project puts us in a, in a real tough situation since the building code has changed. We're designed under the Uniform Building Code. If we went back to redesign, we'd fall under the auspice of the International Building Code, which would put us into a major redesign of the project and delay us for quite a long time. So there's a lot of things that we can do, and we do think that we can land a, a entry level certification for this project. But it's not something that we can give you a definitive answer on now, and we would have to hire a consultant at a considerable expense.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Quintero.
Well, the certification issue is one thing, and as you mentioned, it does cost money to get the official stamp. But in our R F P, and in our, in your presentation to the council, can you call out all of the different energy efficient construction activity that would be going on, from, of course, windows to air conditioning units, et cetera, et cetera? So at least the general public will have an idea that this will be an efficient building.
Councilman Quintero, we certainly can do that. Many of that is contained under the Title 24 requirements for the project, so the low flush toilets, the lights that shut themselves off, all of those things are in the design already, and we can certainly identify that. And, and continue to look for areas where, where we can get more efficient materials and, and more efficient use of water, electricity, and design components to the building. So we'd certainly do that.
Councilman Najarian.
Question perhaps of Mr. Ahern. Assuming these resolutions pass, what is the timeline that we're looking at in terms of actual commencement of the work? And I think it's very important that we bring forward something that the tennis community can look forward to, to ease their pain of losing those four courts. I know we had seen some conceptual drawings of how additional courts could be placed at Fremont Park. We were talking about a center court. I think it's important that, that the city parks come forward with, you know, as the bulldozer scrapes, you know, their beloved tennis courts, we at least have something to show to them that, that we are moving forward, and that we feel they're, that we're sensitive to their interests in, in the sport, the fine sport of tennis, the second best sport out there. And, you know, we can sort of start thinking about this and involve them and let it not seem as though they're getting the bum's rush out of the, the city of Glendale.
I think you mean the best sport out there where one is not wearing goggles.
Yes, yes, better, better put, more aptly put.
We hear you loud and clear, councilman. The, the timing on this is getting out to bid and then receiving bids in October, getting the contract certified by the end of the year and starting construction sometime in January. So that, that start of construction includes mobilization for the contractor. So the first part of January, the contractor will be mobilizing, fencing off, and things of that nature. So that's when the site will, will really become a construction site, mid-January. So that's the first answer. The second answer is we anticipate bringing you a report on the tennis courts in about three weeks. So we're, we're working on that right now, and you should have that in, that'll be actually due on Monday.
Councilmember Yusefian.
Currently, the, the tennis courts are operated by a concessionaire, and I think he was here. And also in Fremont, there is a different concessionaire that operates that one. Is there any way that the one from this operation could get a certain amount of time allocated to him on the other one until, so this way, at least some of the people who play tennis with him have a place to go to? Because my understanding is the other concessionaire has a lot of time, but it's not filled as much. So, and you have a contract with them, and I, I, you know, you may have to kind of deal with the, the city attorney on this issue to see how far you can go. But we need to find place for these people to go and play on a temporary basis. And so that's, that's one thing. And the second question I was going to ask is, January 1st, you're demolishing that buildings. So, so you could build a new building. What's going to happen to the people who go for meals program and so on and so forth? Where do they go?
The current building is going to stay the same. Parking, we're going to try to stage the construction away from the parking area, so there's going to be ample parking for seniors, and also the old meal building is there. So.
So the old meal building is going to stay?
It'll stay until the new facility is open, and then that will be demolished. In terms of the, the tennis use, we've talked to the, the contractor over at Fremont. He's willing to give one court for use for the folks coming from the A R C.
How many courts are there?
There are eight courts over at Fremont.
And he's using all seven courts right now?
Yeah, he's using the courts, but he is willing to make one available for this use. And just to let you know, we do have 30, we have 37 courts right now in the city. And we have some that are under, underutilized. For example, Shoal Canyon has 10 courts that are underutilized. They can always go there. I think the issue there was some of the folks that played there were nurses, people in the healthcare field, and weren't getting coverage with their cell phones up there. If you recall, two years ago, three years ago, they came by and said, "We just can't get coverage up there." I think it may be better now with new cell antennas that we've put up there, but we'll double check with them. But the Fremont contractor is willing to make one court available for the coaches to come in.
I would say come to Glen Oaks Park, except there is no cell coverage at all there. So that's another one. Okay, thanks.
Question from Councilmember Quintero.
We've never really had the opportunity to make policy decisions on this whole concessionaire area. So I would like to talk about this, because my feeling also, I mean, these are basically private businesses that are being run on public court facilities. So I'd like to know how much income we're getting from this? Does the general public have the opportunity to play? I mean, there's a lot of questions that have never really been answered about this particular practice, so whenever.
And Mr. Quintero, Mr. Chapchan, I'm hearing from other colleagues as well, that desire and that same.
Absolutely. We've had staff working on that, actually releasing an R F P to, to have them bid on, on the facility. So we have all the, all the data, all what other cities do, so we can certainly bring that to you very soon. It's just a matter of, we're short on staff in terms of, our analyst is left, but we can bring that to you. We have looked at that.
Yes.
And I have another question, comment, and that is, when are we going to begin to talk about that section of land east of the Central Park, where we currently have the parking, we've got the alley, we're going to have the punch through.
West of, west of.
I'm sorry, west of the park. Because we can begin, I believe, to plan to do something there while we're waiting to do whatever we're going to do with the library, et cetera. I mean, I don't see that as just one, I guess it is part of the master plan, but seems to me we can begin to green those parking spots, that alley, to try to increase the size of the park.
I think we can do that when the new facility is up, when, once we demolish the old building and then push that out and green it. I think that's part of the second phase in terms of the overall master.
Mr. Starper.
Park Phase 2. Need to be $4. Here doesn't park itself. The parking standards would normally apply. We have to rely on the existing parking, plus we built in that postage stamp of some additional parking at the new A R C as well. But we'll, we'll bring up that report and send out copies so you can refresh your memories as to what went on.
Right. One other issue, Mr. Chapchan, while you're there. Obviously, I wasn't here at the time, so what I might have recommended at one time really has no, no bearing at this point. But it relates to question or the comment that Nancy Kent raised about the tennis courts. Had I been here, I would have been fighting like crazy to keep those courts in place. What I am told is the ship has sailed, and I'm here too late to enter into a debate that was settled. But can you explain for the benefit of the speaker earlier and others who continue to contact myself, contact me and my colleagues about saving the tennis courts for a drive-through area? Why it is too late, what the time schedules are we're up against, and so on?
Well, you know, the, the drive-through area, I think, one of the speakers that came up aptly put it in terms of, this is the drop-off for people who can't get around. So it absolutely is necessary to service the seniors, the ever-growing seniors, who have a hard time in terms of mobility, don't have the mobility that we all do. The tennis court issue, this was a vote that was taken by the City Council before, I think a number of, we brought forth a number of options for consideration. One was on brand, you know, we looked at, at site, site plans that included one at the southeast corner. Ultimately, the decision was to go ahead with the adult recreation center as it stands. We had several other issues. One, we had 2.8 million in county grants dedicated to this facility. If we don't move with this, if we delay it anymore, I think we would be in trouble. We'd probably lose those grants. I know 700,000 of that was already in danger. As you recall, we had the county people, three county people here sitting there at one of the meetings, to see if, if the council was going to vote on an issue, to see if there wasn't any more delays. So the 2.8 million would be in danger, we'd be in danger of losing the 2.8 million. So saving, relocating the facility at this point would, would cost a lot more money, I think, than, than actually moving ahead with this project as it is.
Right. Because one of the concerns, though, is not, in other words, just creating new tennis courts somewhere in the city doesn't mean that you are serving, I mean, you personally, but that we are, are serving the, the, the needs in that area. And, and, you know, I've played all the courts in the city, and Fremont is not Central Park. I mean, it's just, it's a different area altogether. Your city manager?
Two things. Lest, lest we connect the tennis courts just with the drive-through drop-off, it's also the building. The building sits 30 feet into where the tennis courts are. So it's not just the drive-through drop-off, it's also the building placement, whether it's closer to the east or pushed further over into the green space. And I might add, the amount of green space in Central Park is, is more with the new facility than it is currently. So the amount of green space increases with the new adult recreation center. Trying to think of what the second point was. I lost it.
I'll make, I'll make a point. Also in that discussion was the fact that we were under the, I would call it, the illusion that we would be working with the Glendoe Unified School District at the, at the, at Glendoe High School, which would have been an upgraded court, that would have been dual use for their team, their students, and the general public. That, to me, was the best.
Six courts.
The best alternative, six courts.
And we did a lot of work with that.
Gone forever.
Right. We did a lot of work on that. That was my second point, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Chair. And that is, in a recent conversation with the superintendent, he indicated that, I guess in all candor, he didn't think that issue needed to necessarily be completely dead, that he had still been working it and was willing to. So maybe at the time we take up the design on Fremont, we can put back on the table whether we still want to address the, I think it was six courts at the high school. And remember, that would have made them available. There were questions about the amount of time we could use it, but it essentially would have put six courts back in full operation that, for the most part, especially at night, are not available to residents now. So from their standpoint, although the board took a position, the indication I had from the superintendent last time we met, which was just last week, was still a willingness to talk about that again. And there is a new principal at the high school, although I think the previous principal was very supportive of the project. It really came down to really board view of priorities for funding. But again, that doesn't have to be completely dead at this point, and if you want, when we bring back Fremont, we can talk about that as an option.
You are eternally hopeful, Mr. Senior.
Yes, I try.
Let me go to Mr. Weaver and then Mr. Chapchan.
You can sit down, George.
If I just may, on, on the tennis courts, some of the issue is, is in operations for, you know, it's the contractor who actually does have classes, and, you know, he is, he can always go to the Unified School District and perhaps even rent the, the high school courts. I'm sure they would have the same requirements we do in terms of insurance, but that's an option for him as well, and that does keep the use here in this part of town. So he can also pursue that on his own. There are six courts there. They're not to the level we'd like them, but they are usable.
Thank you, Mr. Chapchan. Mr. Weaver.
Yeah. This deal's been done for a long time. Listen, people come up, stop it, go back, change. The deal was done. If it wasn't done, I'd have been talking for a long time. I never liked the location it was going in. When we first, many years ago, when we first started to look at renderings and locations and designs, I pulled topography maps, I laid out an acrobatic center that would have fit there, six tennis courts, adult recreation with more space. You put the, the tennis courts on the roof, you could have got six tennis courts in. You maximize the space, because you put, you're getting dual use out of it. The park space would have been greater. The tennis people knew about it, I know, but they didn't show up. In fact, the joke here was mentioned by one of my colleagues, "Well, what we need more of is squash courts." And everybody laughed. "We need a squash more than tennis courts." It's only in the intervening years have the tennis people showed up, which is too bad. If they'd been here and forced the time, maybe a different design would have been selected. But the design was selected, it's done, I voted for it, it can't go back. Too much is at stake, county funding, whatever. We're going to have to live with what we got. So I hope this is the last time we hear about, you still have time to tear it all up and start all over. At what cost to the city is that going to be? It just, it doesn't fly. So I lost, but what the heck? I tried my design, it didn't fly. We're going to get a good adult recreation. As Mr. Hubbard says, you're going to have more park space than you have out there now. The only big loser is the tennis courts are not in the central area where they're greatly used by clubs, whatever. Fremont's going to be harder, the longer drives. I don't know how everybody gets there now, if they take buses to Colorado and walk up there, or the old drive. I guess right now, what, all the people using the tennis courts are either on the street or in the library parking lot. There won't be as many in the library parking lot, which the library will like, so, you know, there's trade-offs and stuff. We did the best we could. Oh, and by the way, my plan had two levels of underground parking, too, throughout the whole thing. But that's gone. So please, people, forget it. We got to, we got to go out for bids, get the contract going. Good time for putting bids out, reduce costs. It'll be, have lead in it, which will be good, and we'll get a bigger park in the end. People will just have to put up with the construction noise for a year or two. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Weaver. Any other comments? Mr. Yusefian.
Mr. Mayor, I would like to take this opportunity to clarify. Speaker was talking about a site not too far from here, that we lost that opportunity, was three and a half acres, that's the old Albertson site. I think I need to let them know, Albertson had another 20 years of lease on that property. The lease was sold to the new place, I mean, what's the?
Whole Foods.
Whole Foods, for $6 million. We considered purchasing that, it would have required them a domain, and it required a $17 million price tag. So that's one of the reasons, it's not that we just gave it up. It was way too much money and a lot of litigation. And the council at the time decided that $17 million was awful lot of money that could be invested in other parts of the city. That's a lot of mini parks, a lot of other bigger parks that we could have spent the money. So I just thought it's about time I let people know, we just didn't give it up and let it go. It belonged to Albertson, and they sold the lease for the next 20 years. Wasn't as simple as this, sometimes it looks like.
Okay. Councilmember Quintero.
That was one observation and opinion. I don't see it exactly how Mr. Yusefian sees it, but it's time to move on.
All right. Just some housekeeping. We have, at A, a council item.
Move to council.
Wait, just one moment, please. And at B and C, we have two agency items. Okay.
A second. I move to council.
And we have a second from Mr. Weaver. Let's call the roll, please.
Councilmembers Najarian.
Yes.
Quintero.
Yes.
Weaver.
Aye.
Yusefian.
Aye.
Mayor Draymond.
Yes.
Move.
B and C for the agency.
Second. Let's stop, please, for a moment. Yes, Ms. Benavides.
Prior to taking the, prior to taking the council's motion, the question concerns the staff's request concerning the 75% set aside for parks and rec, whether that be used as an advance. We heard from Councilman Najarian on that issue, and that is not included in these resolutions.
They already voted.
I, I understand.
I, I made, I made the motion the way it was written, which is, it takes the money from redevelopment money right now.
Yes.
And does not touch the set aside. That's what I seconded.
That's correct. Okay. I just wanted to, to verify, since there was not further discussion on that particular issue. Thank you.
All right. We smart boys.
And we have two agency resolutions.
They've been moved and seconded.
Moved and seconded. And if there's no discussion, let's take the roll.
Agency members, Draymond.
Yes.
Quintero.
Yes.
Weaver.
Aye.
Yusefian.
Aye.
Chairman Najarian.
Yes. Will we adjourn for the City Council?
Second.
Will we adjourn for the agency?
Second.